Will you do the roll call?
Of course, roll call. Joseph Britton? Here. Rachel Shaleski?
Here.
Kate Canetta, here. Gladys Cooper?
Here.
Lauren Daley? Joseph De Silva?
Here.
Sorry, Lauren. I heard you there. Catherine Hodgson?
Is Lauren there? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
She is.
I'm here.
Okay, got it.
Catherine Hodgson?
Here.
Richard Jannelli?
Here.
Kathleen Molinaro?
Here.
Albert Russo?
Here.
Amy Spolino?
Here.
Everybody's here.
Got it, everybody?
Thank you, Kate. We're gonna start off with the recognitions of our students. Dr. Sal, you wanna start with that?
It's a good way to start. Yes, the Connecticut Associated Board of Education recognized students throughout the 169 towns each year and for their contribution to the school overall, to the service of school and for their leadership. And we have students that we are gonna recognize tonight. And I'd like to start, we will go by school. We will start with the, with Broadview. I see that Dr. Thomas is here. Would you like to start, please?
Ah, it'd be an honor. We're real excited because we have two of the most amazing students in our building. First, we would like to do Jayla Letigga. Jayla is a very caring, compassionate, intelligent young lady. She has, has continued for exceptional grades in every class. She has this huge thirst for knowledge and she loves to help others. Jayla is also part of the Excel program, which is a competitive program, which just constantly we're preparing our students, not just for high school, but for college and also a career plan. So Jayla is also part of our National Junior Honor Society at Broadview. And she uses this platform to kinda work with other students and her peers and just work in her community. So I would love to just present you to, it won't be the last time you see her at a board meeting. Jayla Letigga. Jayla, you on?
Hi, yes.
Oh, wow!
Thank you for everything that you said about me. It really warmed my heart.
You know it's all true, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for coming. Is your mom on or your dad?
Um, yeah, my mom is outside cuz she's in a conference. Yeah, my mom is. But she's in a conference right now for her job. But I'll show her to you.
We're not gonna grab her.
Don't bother, let her work.
Don't rob your mother. Leave her alone, okay? Because she will get mad at me later. So, congratulations.
She can see me?
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness, okay. Alright, okay. Alright, Jayla, I'm gonna introduce the next person, okay?
Okay, yeah, sorry.
That's okay. Our next person is Makayla Murphy. She's a wonderful young lady too, who exhibits a lot of integrity, determination, compassion, especially about her academics, cuz she excels in everything. She has maintained exemplary grades and is just demanding, all these demanding courses that she takes, she just goes forth and she goes with full steam. She is, has tons of extracurricular activities like dance and karate and all that good stuff. And she loves to perform and serve in the community. She is really a leader. She is not only a great leader, she's very humble and kind and which I think make really great leaders. She's involved in our National Junior Honor Society as well as our student leadership program. And she's committed to not just our Broadview community, but to the community at all. And like I said, you'll see her again in front of this board before she graduates from Danbury High School. Makayla, are you on?
Yeah, I'm right here.
Congratulations. Hi, Mom, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Fine, congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna pass it back to Dr. Sal.
I see you got the DC after all.
Yeah, well, no, this is in honor of my entry.
I see. Okay, let's see. Terrific. Let's go to...
Dr. Sal?
Yes, ma'am.
Before we move on, could I just say on behalf of the board, to Jayla and Makayla, on behalf of the board, we certainly wanna say, congratulations. Thank you. I love those beautiful smiles. And thank you for sharing your peers with us. And we are very proud of you. Thank you again.
Well, we've got Dr.'s leader at Rogers Park.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
We're always excited to do this, one of our favorite times of the year. I have two students to introduce to you tonight. We were not able to get our first student on with us tonight, but our second student is. So our first student is Yandiel Adames. And he's an eighth grade student at Rogers Park. And he's one of our student ambassadors who helps support us, our families and our students during many of our events and throughout the day and year. He has also mentored some of our sixth and seventh grade students and helped support them in their schoolwork and to be really a role model for them. He's an active class member of our Latinos in Action class. And he's one of our students who goes down to South Street, or he was going down to South Street, and working with first graders in tutoring them in reading and math. He's an avid basketball player and baseball player. And he's been one of our students of the month many times over the past three years. He works very hard at maintaining his schoolwork. He's got a great attitude and he contributes his success to his family and friends. So while he's not able to be here tonight, we're super excited to give him this honor. Our second student is Chris Mary Nunez, and she is on tonight. If you can hear me, could turn your video.
Yes, yes.
She was on second seat.
Hi, I'm here, yeah, I'm here.
Hi, Chris Mary.
Hi, honey.
Hi.
So, Chris Mary is a leader not only in school, but she's also, as a member of our Latinos in Action class, but she's also leader outside of school. And she's an active Danbury Police Explorer. Her belief is that it's important part of being a leader is that you have to put yourself out there and not afraid to speak your thoughts and to challenge. We know key things for a good leader. She utilizes her leadership skills to help our bilingual students learn English, find their voice, advocate for their learning, which is, as you know, super important. After school, her involvement in the police explorers provides her with opportunities to assist the police department as well as go on ride along with drill police officers, which must be really cool. She is absolutely a great role model for all of these students at Rogers Park. And we are super excited to give her this honor. Chris Mary, if your parents are there too, we'd love to say thank you to them for all of their help.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, congratulations.
Yes, congratulations, Chris Mary.
Westside Middle School, Dr. Labanka?
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to be with you this evening. We recognize two students and again, very excited to be able to do this. So, so first is Ken Salem. Kenny's a student who enjoys stepping out of his comfort zone. And he is certainly a leader in our National Junior Honor Society. Has helped students out at Mill Ridge and is a volunteer Big Brother with struggling readers. He's an upstander in our school. He stands up for everyone. He's a positive role model. And he recognizes his parents for the positive contributions that they make to make him successful at school as well. So, congratulations, Kenny. And I'm sure your mother would be much happier if I said, "Congratulations, Cap." He's right there, I see him. I see him in the face too.
Yeah, thank you, thank you so much for everything that you said. You've been a great principal. Thank you very much.
And thank you.
You're welcome, congratulations.
Yes, yes.
Go ahead.
And second, I'd like to recognize Maria Adrada Sosa. Maria is an active member of the National Junior Honor Society as well. And she excels in all her classes. And she also shows leadership. She's got a humble sense to her. She's kind, respectful and empathetic. And she certainly strives for excellence in whatever she does. She has been, two years running a top five in the state of Connecticut for the Connecticut Science and Engineering Fair. She's got a goal of becoming a scientist, which is really exciting. I've had the pleasure of working with Maria directly on some of her research projects. A lot of fun. And you can see her will and determination and hard work. I often have to tell her, you have to go home. You've done enough work for one day. And she's just really a shining star in our school and just such a positive person. And we're really thrilled to be able to award her this. Congratulations, Maria.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
No, thank you.
Danbury High School? Dan?
Donovan? How are you?
Good.
You'll notice I have a fancy background like everybody else because when I went to go put mine on, it said my computer does not have a quad-core Intel processor allowing me to do that.
That's what mine says, Dan, so don't feel bad.
So you're stuck with the first year of my kids' lives behind me. That's a picture of every, if you're wondering what it is, it's a picture of every month of their first year. So, with that, I have two awesome students here with me. You know, at Danbury High School, we have quite a few to choose from. But these two really stood out to me when looking at the senior class. And I thought they did it, they served it. And I see, I'm gonna go ladies first. I see Larissa sitting there with her mother. And Larissa's a scholar who believes that anything can be accomplished through hard work and persistence. She is the president of our Board of Governors at Danbury High School, has an impressive 3.9 GPA and shows an incredible worth ethic and believes that working to reach her goals is her greatest comfort though, is helping others. Her experience with tutoring young students through the National English Honor Society taught her that patience is a virtue, welcome to our world, and displayed how much of an impact she can make in the community. Her value was found in helping others around her cuz she is constantly, currently working along with members of our community to form the new portrait of a graduate for Danbury Public Schools. This year alone in the BOG, she organized an awesome homecoming dance for us, created a lot of exciting activities, helped with raise money for organizations like Special Olympics and Jericho. They've been very active during this closure with running a virtual spirit week for the school, trying to keep spirits up. And overall, having such a leadership opportunities has taught her that, you know, with helping hands and a positive mindset, any goal can be accomplished. And both her and her twin sister, so from this distance, I can't tell which one I'm actually looking at, might be her. But her twin sister Lorena are attending UConn in the fall, hopefully. Go ahead, Larissa.
This is my twin.
Hello.
Gotta make sure.
Thank you so much. It's the past 12 years, it's really been a pleasure to be a part of Danbury Public Schools. I came here at five years old and learning English was like such difficulty for me. But the Danbury Public School system really helped me throughout this whole process. And I'm so grateful to be a part of it.
Thank you, thank you very much. It was a pleasure working with you this year in the BOG. Our second student is Aiden Byrne. He's a scholar athlete at Danbury High School, has worked hard and achieved a 4.45 GPA and is positioned as a cross-country team captain. Aiden has taken the challenging mix of honors and AP classes and is ranked 22nd out of 772 students. This winter, he received the FCAC Exemplary Scholar-Athlete Award. He is also FC, all FCAC, second team his junior for cross-country and a varsity athlete in both indoor and outdoor track. While most of his time spent in the classroom, outside the classroom, he maintains all this academic and athletic prowess while working as a cashier at Rite. He is also honors all of his commitments for the National Honor Society, the National Business Honor Society and DECA. In addition, he's a member of peer leadership. His peer leadership project this year, he worked with other seniors to make the school committee a better place. A couple of peer leaders in Aiden organized a bunch of gift donations right around Christmas time to Yale New Haven Hospital, which was very successful. His goal is to constantly improve himself and the lives of others around him. And he'll answer this question in a minute cuz I'm not sure. I know he's going to Stone Hill College, but I'm not sure if you're gonna run there. Are you running there as well, Aiden?
Yes, I'm gonna run on the cross-country and track teams at Stone Hill.
Excellent, congratulations.
Thank you so much, Richard Donovan.
Thank you.
Congratulations, mom and dad in the background there.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's see, we have Alternative Senate, John Webb, Mr. John Webber, for ACE. John?
Evening, everyone. Thanks for having me. With the Cabe Awards and with the Superintendent Awards, what we usually do is we have the teachers who are the guidance teachers of the students who have really built strong relationships with them, write the bios for them because they get to know the family best and they get to know the students best. Our two award winners aren't able to be here tonight, but I wanna represent them and read the bios that were written by their guidance teachers. So the first is Tamara Souza. In looking at the criteria for the Cabe Award, it was evident that Tamara Souza is the one who fits the criteria quite nicely. She's been representing ACE for at least two years as a Stars participant to work in collaboration with other alternative schools in Connecticut. She's been the sole ACE student representative at the Board of Ed meetings for the last two years. And through her participation and involvement, she's seen herself be able to build relationships with the Board, the Superintendent, the Assistant Superintendent and other cabinet members in the Danbury District. Tamara has earned the Youth of the Month Award for November 2019, as recognized by the Danbury Exchange Club, which then made her eligible to win the Youth of the Year Award in the spring. She's been recognized several times for her achievements within our program, for Student of the Month, for Making Honors, for Making High Honors, for winning the Ace of Spades for Hard Work, the Ace of Hearts for Caring. And she's known for keeping promises and keeping her commitments. And she is, she's also someone who has reached out to her peers the whole time she's been an ACE to provide support to her peers. Just the last thing I would say about her that I'm adding to the bio is that in the beginning of the year, she came to me and she said, "I feel like you represent the, you award students for their accomplishments." And she said, "How come the staff never gets any awards?" And I said, "Well, what do you wanna do?" And she said, "I'm gonna organize a Staff of the Month Award. And anybody who works at ACE can earn that award, doesn't have to be a teacher." And so she started taking votes every month. And then at our large guidance, when we have the entire building in an assembly, she will present the Staff of the Month Award to staff members. So she's somebody who really gives back, not just to, you know, the building, but she appreciates the things that she's been given at ACE and in Danbury Public Schools. Our second award winner is Amy Almahrobelle. Amy is an exceptionally motivated and dedicated student who has often been known to put the needs of other people before herself. While this is often a respectable quality, it can also present downfalls. This has happened to Amy in the past as she had found herself struggling in school at Danbury High School because she was busy taking care of everyone else, leading to her decision to apply and come down to ACE. Since coming to ACE, she's been trying to balance her own needs with the needs of others. She's volunteered to help at all the building-wide community service events. She has been a high honor student this entire year. And her academic excellence has pushed her towards putting herself in a position to graduate this June, which in the beginning of the year in September, she was not on the list to graduate in June. But through her hard work, she's got herself there. So I just wanna celebrate those two students and say thank you for having us.
Thank you, and congratulations to them.
All right. Thank you, John. Okay, the next, the next thing we have under recognition, our new assistant principals. And I thought first, before I read, look at, share with you a little bit about the resume, I'd let Kim Thompson talk a little bit about the process. And then I'll talk a little bit about the resume. And then both principals will talk a little bit about their selection with me. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sal. So as many of you know, we typically operate with assistant principal and principal positions with a two-panel interview system. And it includes a wide swath of administrators and teachers, staff members, all of whom contribute to this vetting of candidates for the assistant principal position. Typically, we require writing samples and we have a pretty rigorous questioning policy in these panels. And this year was no exception to that rigor. It was a little bit different, given the COVID crisis. We collapsed into a single panel, so fewer participants, but none more enthusiastic ever than the panel that we had this year that also included our own board member, Mr. De Silva, and some administrators and teachers as well. So people who run the gauntlet here in Danbury certainly have to go through their motions, whether they are new to us or whether they are interims, as our two candidates this year were. And it was just a nice opportunity, I think, for each one of them to showcase their achievements from this year and before. And so we'll turn it over to Dr. Sal to tell you who they are.
All right, why don't we start with Westside Middle School? This is Jennifer's second year with us, but Jennifer serves currently, she serves currently as the interim assistant principal at Westside. She had worked with us as a language arts specialist for a four-year where she did, worked with social affective development of students, both intellectually and socially, as I mentioned. She was responsible to the building principal for literacy administration to coordinate the program with them. And she during that time demonstrated great knowledge for diagnosis and intervention acceleration of students. Prior to that, she worked in Hartford. She was interim principal at Hartford Public Schools from February 2018 to July at Thurman Melner School. She also was the assistant principal of curriculum instruction literacy at the Hartford Public Schools from 2013 till she left there and came with us. And in that role, she, as you imagine, she was really not what I call just dealing with the student department, but she worked as an instructional leader, which led her, I think, into the positions that she has now where she's been a great resource to our district and to the principal. I'll let Dr. Labanka now talk a little bit about her. And then we'll go to the next candidate. Congratulations there, Jennifer. Frank?
Thank you, Dr. Sal. So it is just wonderful to have Jennifer Blue as our official assistant principal now. She comes to us with such a wealth of knowledge. And I think, you know, for me personally, it's such a great compliment to my skillset in terms of our instructional sharing. She manages our humanities departments while I'm managing STEM departments. And that work we do together, especially around helping students accelerate their learning. She's got such great strength in that, and I think that's a huge value. She's made such positive relationships with our students and our parents. And she's such a welcome part of the Westside family. And I look forward to many years working with her. Congratulations, Jennifer.
Jennifer, get online, where are you? There she goes. Oh, nice background, where'd you get that?
I'm sorry?
Where'd you get that background? Can you hear me, Jennifer?
This background.
All right, good, good. Wanna say anything? Would you like to say anything?
I wanna say thank you very much for this opportunity. I enjoy my job so much at Westside. It's just a wonderful community and I feel fortunate to be working there. So I am honored and grateful and look forward to the upcoming school year without this dark cloud of virus over us. But we'll manage, we're gonna manage, we're trying our best. So I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations. Okay, and next, over at Broadview Middle School, we have Shelley Rinaldi. And Shelley currently serves as the interim assistant principal. And she's been responsible for doing evaluation, doing collaboration curriculum, facilitating the professional development. But prior to that, Shelley did work with us in the era of literacy and ELA curriculum. She really personally created our intervention program, maintained it. Was giving us a lot of information for making decisions for youngsters so that they would be placed in the right programs, get the assistance that they needed. And when we had an opportunity to look for someone who could help in terms of the structure of a middle school, understanding child development and had such a wonderful curriculum background, Dr. Thomas said, "Hmm, what shall I do?" And I'm gonna let her talk about Shelley right now.
It was very simple, I needed her. Honestly, Shelley is well-rounded. Every principal looks for someone who can fill the weakness, whatever area of weakness. And her strength in intervention and being able to look at students at different angles is something that we're gonna definitely need at Broadview. And she just has a great disposition, nothing seems to faze her. Every morning, it's almost annoying because we meet at eight o'clock in the morning and she's got a smile on, like eight o'clock in the morning, just smiling. And in return, I think this has been a great position for her to be filling. So we're real excited. And not only that, we're excited at the middle school level because we have two amazing assistant principals that are joining us. And I think it's gonna make our team extremely strong.
Shelley, you there?
Thank you.
Shelley there?
Shelley isn't here, I'm sorry. Shelley had a family emergency. So she did tell me to let you guys know that she really appreciated. And she, thank you very much for the opportunity. She is so thrilled to be in a one place, in a building. And she just wanted for me to just reach out and say thank you.
Thank you. That's it, thank you. Public participation?
As of right now, there is no public participation.
Okay.
We're gonna do the employee representative part though as well, right?
According to my agenda, we're looking at the consent calendar first.
No, we're looking at the consent calendar.
Yeah, that's next. Yeah, and then employee rep.
Okay, and then the employee. So Kate, you wanna make the motion for the consent calendar?
Yes, thank you, Gladys. I'm making a motion at the Board of Education to approve the items on the consent calendar, Exhibit 20-47 through Exhibit 20-49 as recommended.
Motion made by Kate, could I hear a second?
Al's got his hand up there.
Al made the second emotion. Any questions concerning the motions? Seeing that, good. We do a name count, okay? That's what I was told to do.
Okay, so I'll do just a roll call on that?
Yeah, roll call.
Joseph Britton?
Who's all?
Rachel Shaleski?
Aye.
Kate Canetta?
Aye.
Gladys Cooper?
Aye.
Lauren Daley?
Aye.
Joseph De Silva?
Aye.
Catherine Hodgson?
Aye.
Richard Jannelli?
Aye.
Kathleen Molinaro?
Aye.
Albert Russo?
Aye.
Amy Spolino?
Amy?
You're on mute.
Aye.
There you go, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry.
So the motion is carried, thank you. Employee representative.
Hey, person Cooper, can we let the parents know? I mean, the parents and the students know that it's okay for them to leave?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, Erin.
That's okay.
So students, we just wanna take this moment to congratulate you all. And we appreciate you staying on. But we also just wanted to let you know if you left, that's also okay. But we thank you guys for being part of the meeting. And I know we also have some school student reps. So if you guys are hanging around, we're looking forward to hearing from you.
Okay.
Thanks, Miss Cooper.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Walsh. Now, Erin, the employee rep.
Good evening, everyone. I hope everybody is doing well tonight.
Thank you.
Good, it's good to see everybody and see all of your happy, healthy faces tonight. I wanted to take a minute, and I'm gonna do this a little bit teacher style. So when we write report cards, we always start off with all the positives that we wanna talk about. We couch in a little bit of the things that we wanna work on and get better at and then wrap it up with some positives. So I wanna start out with some really amazing positives that I wanna tell you about. Our teachers continue to show their commitment to the community through their volunteerism, their outreach and their generosity. And so with this pandemic going on and a lot of our union-sponsored events that were canceled, we wanted to take that money that we weren't using on some of our events, like our retirement, end of the year, teacher celebration dinner. And we wanted to put it toward a cause that would benefit our students and our families. So our members took a vote and they voted to donate $5,000 to the community, which all went to combat food insecurity in our community. We donated $1,000 to the Connecticut Food Bank. We donated $1,000 to the Daily Bread Food Pantry. $1,000 to the New American Dream Foundation to continue the meal program on Saturdays, which has been so successful. And then we voted to donate $2,000 to the Broadview Pantry. And I just wanna give a shout out to this group of teachers that has been doing amazing work at Broadview. And I just want to give a shout out to this group of teachers that has been doing amazing work at Broadview. They were doing amazing work year round, making sure the needs of their students were taken care of by setting up a little boutique in the school. To provide food items and sanitary products for the students that needed them and hygiene products. They were doing all this wonderful stuff before this happened and then the pandemic struck. And they knew that they had families that really needed some support. So they wanted to continue the program, but the program has actually taken on all new legs. And what they're doing is feeding approximately, I think they're up to thirty-five families now on a weekly basis. And it's really an army of teachers, not only from Broadview, but from other schools as well, that are shopping. That are collecting Amazon food orders that the community has donated. And they're driving these packages that they put together to students' homes on a weekly basis. Making sure that students have bread, milk, eggs and basic essentials for them. I do need to mention that one of our wonderful paraprofessionals at Broadview, Laura Hallis. Actually really played a huge role in this because she donated the greenhouse, Hallis Farm property, which she owns. To make sure that all of the packaging and all of the food items could get sent there. And it served as kind of a distribution spot for all the teachers to collect and socially distance, put these packages together. So these are the kinds of stories that, you know, kind of warm my heart and show all the things that teachers do. And to go above and beyond and show our staff dedication to help our families in need. So that's some really good news. Some more really important good news to share was, is that teachers are becoming increasingly proficient. With their new technologies. They're taking new risks to apply their new learn technologies and new strategies to their Google classrooms. And they're taking risks to use all these new things like screen sharing and little tools that we've all learned how to do in this pandemic. To make sure that their students are getting the benefit of good quality instruction. They're improving their engagement strategies. And teachers are now beginning en masse to implement synchronous learning. Techniques which involve live meetings with their students. And this is something many, many teachers had been doing already. But now it's going to be something that's going to be moving forward, going to be part of our weekly routines. It's very important. We need to make sure that we're connecting with our students to improve the social emotional learning process. Make sure our students feel connected with us, connected with their community, connected with their schools. So these live meetings are going to be serving as a really positive step forward in our distance learning plan. So that was, that was something that I really wanted to make sure that everybody understands the hard work that we've kind of put forward. To make all those different phases of our distance learning plan come together. And this is kind of the last crucial piece that we're going to be working on for the remainder of the year. And holding on to all that new learning in case we need to use it, which I'm sure we're going to in the months to come for next year. Moving forward, I want to just talk a little bit about something that Commissioner Cardona said a few days ago. When talking about returning back to school in the fall. He said, a return to normalcy will have to be a marathon and not a sprint. And he also discussed of how it's not going to look anything like any of us are used to. With that in mind, I really want to implore and caution the board not to fall pressure to rush to return to school. Without a thoughtfully put together plan that makes sure that safety is paramount. And that safety is the focus of our employees and our students. I know that there's going to be a lot of push from outside sources and community members and, you know, statewide a push. To maybe move forward and if we're not quite ready, I'm imploring you to make sure that our plan is put together and don't fall victim to that pressure. We want to make sure our students and our staff are not sacrificial lambs just to jumpstart the economy. Our health and safety is the most important thing. And, you know, we can't have quality learning and quality instruction if we're not healthy. So we need to make sure that that is the focus. I know we have a team that's put together to study the reentry and I just want to also make a request while I'm part of that team, I want to request that there are other teachers. And actually, all building stakeholders or district stakeholders, employees that work that will have a voice in putting the plan together. We have an incredible brain power that's collective. And putting that brain power together to work on a plan, we really need to use those resources for our safe return. And I think that it's very important that you tap into the ideas and the experiences of our staff members. I've already had many, many emails from people offering suggestions. Collectively, moving forward, our state union has a set of guidelines that they're going to be really emphasizing. For the going back to school process, which includes things that we've already heard in the news and that we've talked about. Comprehensive testing for our staff members, potentially our students as well, contact tracing and tracking of the virus. Requirements, and this is really important, a requirement for making sure we have everyone that comes back to school is wearing protective equipment. District provided protected equipment is something that we're going to need to discuss moving forward. We'll need to make sure that the district protocol for disinfecting and sanitizing is put into place. And that the district has the funding to continue to do that while we still need to do that. It's not something we should be, you know, falling short and worrying about back ordering of products. It's something that we have to be prepared for and that we have to have it in place in order to restart school. There are a lot of other items that, you know, we'll be talking about in the weeks and months to come. But I just wanted to kind of put that in the mindset of the board of knowing where we're coming from, that, you know, obviously, safety is paramount for all. A couple of things I think that our teachers are voicing, we need to get better as a district. And I don't think anybody would disagree about that is how we're reaching out to our families to make sure all of our students are engaged. And some of our students who we have not been able to connect with or reach or bring in to the day to day distance learning process. On an effective level, we need to make sure that those contacts are done in an efficient manner. My example for this would be currently teachers are making the predominance of all the phone calls to parents and the secondary layer would be guidance counselors and PPS staff. As we move forward, we're gonna need to really utilize all of our employees to make sure that they're all reaching out and connecting with students. And it's not just the teachers who are also providing instruction, also providing, you know, writing new curriculum. And to that's going to be distance learning appropriate. Teachers shouldn't be the only ones doing the heavy lifting with the parent communication. So we need to come up with a plan district wide that improves upon what we're currently doing. I want to just also talk about very briefly, I know it's budget season. And being that teachers are doing this extreme heavy lifting to make all of this work happen. I want to make sure the board is going to continue to support them by making sure that they have the resources and financial support to continue to make all of this happen. We as a district, we know this, we're always short changed here in Danbury. And now more than ever, we need to increase our educational funding. Last September, ranking one sixty-ninth, we all know was an absolute disgrace. But right now, that disgrace has turned into an emergency. And we can't continue, we can't afford to fall further behind than we already are. We've got to make sure that funding is a priority and that, you know, we're shouting to all the people that are going to listen statewide. In our, in our community that ensures that our students aren't short changed and they get all the resources that they need. I told you I'm gonna wrap it up with some positivity. That was all my couch things that we need to work on. I have to say, and I will give a shout out to Dr. Sal. I am encouraged by the current communication and the relationship that we have been fostering throughout this, this process. The dialogue has been super with administration. We're having weekly meetings, we're talking about things, even if we don't agree on how we're going to go about it. The dialogue is open, the communication is open. And I think that's really the best way moving forward to continue our collaborative relationship. So Dr. Sal, I thank you for your leadership on that level and I hope that we can continue that collaborative relationship. I really think it's to all of our benefits to keep that, that communication open and in moving forward. So hopefully that will continue throughout the summer as we work on all the hard work and the heavy lifting that still needs to be done. And I thank you very much for your time and I hope everyone continues to stay well.
Thank you, Erin, and thank you for all that you do.
Thank you so much, Ms. Cooper.
Next on the agenda, we have our student rep.
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
I'm good. How are you? Okay, so me and Larissa are here from DHS. I'm Becca, the BOG treasurer. Larissa and I just wanted to share a few things that are happening digitally at DHS. First off, this week or last week was Teacher Appreciation Week. And the National Honor Society and Peer Leadership Classes came together to create an activity. Where we sent emails to all the students, to all the teachers. So the students signed up for a teacher and then we would send emails to each teacher, which was really successful. This week, we started AP testing at DHS. I personally have taken two tests so far. They went really well. Some people had some issues, but we'll keep the district updated with how that's going. I know it's new. We've never done this before, so, and neither has College Board, so hopefully it goes well. We started a new schedule this week. I'm not sure if any other schools have. Where we have A-days on like a Monday and then we submit everything by that, by Wednesday night. And this is just to ensure that kids are submitting their work on time, making sure that kids are healthy. And, you know, their mental health is coming before, you know, some other things. So I think it's, it's working out so far for me and I hope it's working out for all the other kids. I'm gonna pass it over to Larissa and she's gonna continue.
So the DHS PTO is also hosting a junior prom picture submission. So feel left out since they're not gonna be able to participate in prom this year. The B and the senior class officers are also hosting a prom picture submission for the senior class. Which will highlight their outfits in a fun video. The graduation plan is still pending for the class of two thousand twenty, as many of you probably know. And as the year comes to an end, the senior class officers have created an Instagram to show some of our graduates future schools and their plans. And I think that is all for today. Thank you.
Thank you so very much for sharing the information with us. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I am here to speak for ACE. So I'd like to thank you all for allowing me to represent the Alternative Center and share what's going on with our family during this time of distance learning. So ACE staff has created a Google classroom called ACE Strong. In an effort to connect all students and build community. And this class staff have created fun activities, video messages to students and resources for supporting each other during this difficult time. ACE staff is recognizing students' achievements through the use of flip grids that allows staff to publicly appreciate students. And these flip grids can be viewed in the ACE Strong class as well as on the ACE website. Daniela Espinoza and Kyle Chikola have launched the ACE Renaissance Fair for all World Studies and English One students. And will run all week. The fair involves, the fair involves virtual field trips to the Globe Theater. Interactive learning activities, trivia games and prizes for students. The fair was created in an effort to engage students and their guardians in learning together during this time of distance learning. Lastly, as we approach the end of the year, plans for celebrating our seniors graduates are underway and will be shared out soon. May America be above everything and God above everyone. Thank you all so much for supporting our ACE family and stay safe, everybody. Thank you all.
Very much.
Madam Chairman, may I make a request, please?
Yes.
Under presentation, I hadn't, I was uncertain if we were gonna be able to do this and seeing that I have the principals there tonight. And there's been questions about graduation and other things, commencement, moving up ceremonies. And I will go on record now, we've been waiting for the commissioner to give us guidelines. But I know that the principals and Dan and the rest have been really personally just at their wit's ends trying to figure out how to recognize these wonderful youngsters for their accomplishments. And also for their moving up ceremony for graduating and they're with us tonight. If it's okay with you, I'd like them to talk about what they're thinking about. And then I know that this Friday, we're supposed to get guidelines about what we can and cannot do. We know we can't do large group gatherings, but there seems to be some options for small, less than ten recognition. So if it's okay with you under presentation, I will have them talk about what they're thinking about, if it's all right.
Yes, it's okay down the same, yes.
Thank you. So why don't we start with Dan? I know Dan, you did some survey and talking to some students and parents. Maybe you could tell a boy what you've done and sort of the brainchild of what you're thinking. Dan, are you there? He's on mute.
No, I was on mute, sorry.
Okay.
You know, we're trying to push the envelope every way we can. So, you know, we haven't come out with any plans yet because like you said, we were waiting for the guidelines. Because I think that May twentieth deadline of the state may change a couple of things that we can do. But so patience for everyone that's out there on our senior class because, you know, we're trying to put stuff together. I did have and listened to ideas from first the class officers I had a meeting with. I met with the BOG and Larissa and the group. I had a, you know, Zoom with the class of two thousand twenty, sent out an invitation, anybody that wanted to go. I had a principal's breakfast and tried to tell them my thinking as well. So we've tried to communicate our ideas, but not our plan because we don't know if our plan's gonna be successful yet. I have been in conversations with Danbury Police Department on what we can do. And actually Mayor Mark, who were very receptive to trying to give the class of two thousand twenty everything that they can, they can get. Because they were so short changed on everything they had coming up at the, you know, one of the best parts of high school. So we are looking at two different kind of major events for our seniors right now. One is our cap and gown distribution, yearbook, gold cords, tassels, things like that. The issue being with like that is the date of which we're gonna get stuff. Like everything else, cap and gowns were not an essential organization to be running, so they were shut down. Yearbooks were shut down and they're doing the best that they can to try to get us this as early as possible. Plus, graduating on June twelfth is in some cases a week and a half to two weeks earlier than we normally do. So there's a problem with that with our dates. But cap and gown distribution and graduation. We're looking for, you know, cap and gown distribution to be more of a, you know, car parade type, inviting the staff in socially distanced. Away from each other, out on the sidewalk, kids, you know, drive up, decorate the front of the building type stuff. They can decorate cars, things like that, drive up, put their name up in the window. We throw the cap and gown and yearbook or whatever in the back. That's kind of our, our thing going there. More of the party type style than graduation. Graduation, we're looking to have an in-person event. And you gotta kind of follow me on this one. An in-person event in which the students will be able to wear those cap and gowns, walk across the stage in the front of Danbury High School. Hear their name called, have their family present in a designated area. Trying to take pictures and all that stuff. We'll have photographers there as well and all that stuff. But put a stage up there, decorate it, put a tent over it, so it looks very similar to what we kind of do now. And have them designate times for kids to come, obviously breaking it down by the different levels and alphabet. We're still working through how long it's gonna take, the, you know, the parking and all that, we're pretty good with on the routes and things. And talking to the police and everything for traffic on how we can do that. The problem is, there are seven hundred eighty, seven hundred seventy-two students slated to graduate this year. If each student takes approximately two minutes up on stage or anything like that. You're looking at like twenty-five hours of graduation ceremony. So it's something that, I don't know if I can stand there for twenty-four hours. I'll give it my best shot. I'll give it my best shot, but, you know, it's, it's a long time. So what we're gonna do is break it down over three days, times, you know, starting at nine o'clock in the morning, going to four o'clock in the afternoon and get kids, anyone who wants to, they certainly don't have to, and hand them their diploma and get them all their stuff, picture opportunity and stuff like that, so they can have that moment of actually walking across the stage. You know, normally I would invite and they're more than welcome, any board member that wants, but I certainly understand that they're not gonna be there the whole time, you know, but I would be there to, you know, hand the diploma to kids socially distanced, you know, take some pictures and things like that. So we are really working hard at what we can do. There's a million ideas out there. The problem is a lot, a million ideas, you know, don't fit Danbury High School. You know, if I had two hundred seniors, there's a lot more I could do. You know, we would probably push the envelope for almost an in-person one. You know, we were looking at, and how can we do this in groups? And the problem becomes, you know, the numbers we're allowed to have and the current regulations and orders from the, from the governor and things like that. So we're working for it. I do have to give a shout out to our PTO members, especially Kathy Snow and Rich Meckinger, who went on this awesome, you know, yard sign thing, which we've had for years, but this year it really took off. And there's, they've sold, you know, somewhere around three hundred and fifty yard signs, many of which were donated by the community that we can go out and we're having that pickup supposedly on the sixteenth, the same thing, kids drive up, roll down the back window, we throw it in there and things like that. You know, we were looking to see if we could get every single one to every kid, but it doesn't seem like we're gonna be able to do that just on the timing parts of it, but I do have to give a shout out to them. So those are kind of our plans. The reason I haven't put them out there or haven't put anything out there is when you release something to, you know, seven hundred and seventy-two families, sometimes it gets twisted and sometimes it gets, and if we have to retract anything from that because we're not allowed to do it for whatever reason, then it becomes a problem. So we're waiting to get this solid go-ahead that we can do this and then we'll move forward.
So we're gonna talk about the rest, but the board can empathize with you. I think it's very easy to do it online, but Dan tried to personalize it and has been really thinking through how we could do that. So I appreciate that, Dan. I just got an, I just got an email I just sent you. Supposedly we're gonna get these guidelines on Friday, so we'll see.
Yeah, I read that, you know. Yeah, you know, the one thing in the meetings that the students, the kids really didn't want is a virtual. They didn't want the, you know, something like that. They, they really wanted the in-person part, cap and gown, wearing, you know, stuff like that. So that's kind of what we're, we're trying to build towards. It's just very difficult when we're building these, you know, and it's changing and everything like that.
So let's go to the, let's go to, to, if you don't mind, we'll go to John now, Weber, and then we'll go to the middle schools.
Yeah, I could be pretty quick and, and really echo a lot of what Dan said in terms of putting a plan together, but not releasing it until we have the guidelines, partly because it becomes difficult to retract. And also I don't wanna, I don't wanna get kids' hopes up for a certain type of event and then have to pull it back from them. What we're looking at, Dan mentioned, you know, if he had fewer graduates, he might have more flexibility to be able to work something like this and put something like this together. We, we obviously have a much smaller number of graduates than Dan does. So I'm looking at a hybrid of an in-person event that is outdoors using social distancing and following all of the, the state guidelines and directives as well as recording the speeches that guidance teachers give about the kids, as well as the speeches that the kids write for the guidance teachers. But I, I don't wanna put anything out there yet. I wanna have a cooked up definite plan, but I don't wanna put it out there until I know that we can safely execute it and that it falls within the, the state guidelines. The other thing that we also did was a, you know, and I also don't wanna ruin some surprises for kids because I was trying to have some surprises. But the, the, the flag idea is something that we already ordered and we're waiting on the delivery for those. The flags all have some personalized aspects to them with regards to the students in the school. And that's it.
Let, let's go to the middle school. I guess, one on Christie.
Sal, I can, I can represent the group. I don't know if all of them are here. I told them I'd speak on their behalf. So the, the middle schools, you know, like John, like Dan, are very interested in, in trying to pull off something that's meaning, promotion, a meaningful exercise for the, for the moving up ceremony for eighth grade to ninth grades. The three principals feel comfortable, they can do something really meaningful and worthwhile in a virtual environment and platform. And they are excited to announce that they would like to have that on June eleventh. And I have some times that we would like to release soon, but we probably should wait until after Friday whenever there's more guidance coming out from the state.
Okay, so let me just go back to Dan for a second. Dan, because you had mentioned the last, the, the last day of school, which has been typically our graduation date. You said there'd be, if, if it would be permissible, you would do this in thirds as well. Would it end on that date? Is that what you're thinking, just so the board gets an idea?
Yeah, we're planning, I mean, I gotta go back and look at the exact times, but June tenth, eleventh, and end on the twelfth. You know, there's two hundred, I believe it was two hundred and forty graduates, day one, three hundred and something, day two, and a lower number. For anybody who missed their time, we can play a little catch-up at the end. Who couldn't make it during the other times, you know, we could get seven hundred people, we might get three hundred. I'm not sure which way it's gonna go.
Okay, all right, I just wanted them to hear that. It sounds like a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday thing, that's all.
Yeah, it's gonna be a marathon.
Okay, marathons are good.
I don't run marathons.
Well, we both should a little bit anyway. Okay, so thank you for doing, I appreciate that. I don't know if anybody has any questions because they're here, it might be a good time.
Does any board members have any question to either John or Mr. Donovan?
I think, I think also we have some middle school principals here too. Edie's still here.
Catherine, are you raising your?
So, yes, thank you. So my question would be is if Dan's planning a three-day and somebody has a high schooler and a middle schooler and the middle schools are gonna do it on the eleventh, I thought I heard, that wouldn't be conducive for the parents, right, to be in two places at once?
Mine's during, mine's during the day, mine will be nine to four, theirs are at night, they're five thirty to seven.
All right.
Five thirty to seven.
Yeah, okay, I just wanted to make sure that they weren't overlapping because of, I had that at one point.
Yeah, we, we had the conversation, we had the conversation with the high school to make sure.
Okay. Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. We can move on down the agenda if there's no other questions. Action item. Action item A, Kate.
Action item A, education specifications for Ellsworth Street School Annex. I'll make a motion that the Board of Education approve the education specifications for the Ellsworth Street School Annex as recommended by the Sites and Facilities Committee in accordance with twenty dash fifty.
Second.
Motion made by Kate, seconded by Catherine. Are there any questions concerning the motion?
I just want you to know, I do have Glenn Jaigle here and Antonio at a role in case there are any questions.
Yeah, I've got a question. Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Okay, Dr. Sal or whomever, the, what is the security in terms of entering the building if somebody wants to see someone on the second floor? Is there a difference between, is there a separation so they, they cannot go to the classrooms on the first floor?
I'll, I think about Glenn, would you talk, speak to that, or Kelly, either one of them? Glenn or Kelly? Glenn, are you there?
Okay, he's on mute.
On mute there, Glenn.
But I can answer questions as well.
Yeah, Sal.
There he is.
Sal, the, I don't know if Glenn is here. Miss Giannelli, there, there are indeed two.
He's here, Glenn Jaigle.
Sal, it's, it's Antonio, I can answer that.
All right, go ahead, go ahead, Antonio.
Yeah, we, Richard, we have gone through an extensive process of dealing with security on this annex building. There is, there is a checkpoint that will basically allow everybody to come into the building and access the second floor as well as if we want them, get them into Ellsworth School themselves. As a security office, a major checkpoint, nobody can get in and out. So if somebody wants to visit somebody on the second floor, they would come in through the security office, state what their reason is for the visit, and then a staff member from the Board of Education could come down and secure those individuals and bring them up if they needed to.
And there's an elevator, right?
Yes, there's an elevator, yeah. So basically what I'm concerned about is, is somebody coming in and having the ability to, to wander. So they, they may wanna go to the second floor, but they're off and wander somewhere in the first floor. I mean, you're pretty, pretty comfortable that that wouldn't happen or you're trying to prevent that? Yeah, Richard, absolutely will not happen. If you see some of the preliminary drawings that we've put together, there's a, basically a holding block for anybody that comes into their school where they can't get any further than the security office. And the security office personnel has, in a very secure state. There's no way they can access the rest of the building as it's designed right now. Okay, thank you. Unfortunately, I can only read financial statements and I can't read blueprints, so I had to ask the question, I'm sorry. But thank you very much. No problem.
Are there any other questions the board members have, or Antonio? Thank you. Action item B?
We gotta take a vote.
We gotta take a vote first, right?
Okay, I'm sorry.
So I'll do a, I'll do your roll call vote. Okay. Joe Britton?
Yes.
Rachel Chaleski?
Aye.
Kate Canetta, yes. Gladys Cooper?
Aye.
Lauren Daley?
Aye.
Joe DeSilva?
Aye.
Catherine Hudson?
Aye.
Rich Giannelli?
Aye.
Kathy Mullenaro?
Aye.
Al Russo?
Aye.
Amy Spalina?
Yes.
Passes.
Motion so fast, thank you. Action item B, Rachel, would you do the motion for action item B, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
I make a motion at the Board of Education except for first reading, policy six one one four point eight, emergencies and preparedness as accepted by the Policy Committee, exhibit twenty dash fifty-one.
Motion been made by Rachel.
Second. Second.
Joe?
Yeah.
Are there any questions on motion? Any question concerning the policies?
I've got a question, Gladys. All these motions that we're voting for on the policies are just for the first reading, is that correct?
That's correct. This is the first reading, the final reading would be done at our next board meeting if I'm, if I'm not mistaken.
Is it okay that if I have questions, can I write the questions to the committee rather than waste the time of the full board and let the committee evaluate them?
I don't see why not.
You know, just in the interest of saving time, they're, you know, just general questions. And if there's any issues, they could just respond or just to bring it up at the next meeting. Rather than taking time tonight to go through each at once.
So Richard, that's what, that's the way, or it might be even the general public would have that. If they have a question, they, they could send it to my office and then I would share it with the Policy Committee or maybe they can get answers in advance. So yes, it's appropriate is what I'm saying.
Okay, so I could direct it to, I'll direct it to the Chair, to, to the Superintendent and to the Policy Committee.
Are we? May I interject? Are we having a Policy Committee meeting before the next board meeting?
No, we don't have one scheduled.
So this would come up for a second reading at the next board meeting?
Yes. And I believe that it, it needs to be, it needs to come up three times for the board before it can be accepted. It was my understanding.
So, sorry.
Second reading and a third reading, no?
If, if, if we came back the second time and there are a lot of questions, right. We would just try to, the board would ask us to modify it and then we'd bring it back again. There's no rush. That's usually what happens, if there's any. Sometimes there isn't any and it's acceptable, it depends on, but it can go another time, yes.
Okay. So does it kick back? I'm sorry to interrupt, Gladys. I just wanna clarify because I, this is a procedural thing I need to understand and I'm wondering if anybody else is having the same question. When the policy goes through the first reading and gets the approval by the board and then it goes back to the Policy Committee for another review or is it, or does it go?
If you want me to try to answer, I'll try to.
No, because if you're doing it for the first reading and say action item, the very first one, action item A, there was no, right now, I don't seem to be no questions or anything. So to me, that's acceptable. So the next time we do it for the second reading, it's completed. Unless, you know, I don't hear any one having any question for action item A now. So to me, that's done. So when we bring it back to the second reading, we vote on it and it's final. Unless I'm missing something.
No, I, I think you're right, Mrs. Cooper. I'm just looking at the policies now or the bylaws and your bylaw three, two is the one that addresses policy adoption. And it does look like there's a first reading. There can be any amendments or revisions placed on the board meeting agenda. Then there is, policies will be adopted or amended after the second reading of the policy. And there can be discussion about changes then. It doesn't say anything about them having to be consecutive meetings though, so I think you probably could have your meeting, your next meeting without including it. And if you wanna have time for the Policy Committee to meet, or you can discuss the amendments at the next meeting when you're reviewing it for the second time, it looks like.
Well, it's a pleasure of the board as far as making the amendments at the second meeting. If there's any amendments to be made.
Well, may I say something so that, so, so Richard has a couple of things he wants to question about it? So send in his letter or his email and then, and then we, the next time? Like, I mean, what's the purpose of first reading, second reading, third reading? If we're not supposed to make changes or, like you said, Gladys, that, you know, it seems fine and we won't be going back to that one.
The, the policy require, the, your board by law requires two readings.
Two readings, right.
Okay.
It's, it's pretty standard. I mean, you're getting it out to, first of all, you had a subcommittee of board brainstorm, go through it and put what they want together and they hammered out these. It comes to the whole board, you read it tonight. If someone wanted to make some comments tonight, certainly it would be thoughtful, but it has to go out to the, for a hearing to the general public. It goes out to them. And generally, if there's some feedback for changes, we come back to the second meeting and we report on that. And sometimes, and I, I do remember once or twice where we had, it had to go back for more conversation with pretty much the second time, the whole board as a whole would either accept, modify, make amendments to the policy. And then if they, then if they adopted it, then we would create guidelines administratively to, to, to implement. So it can go back, there is no rush is what I'm saying, as Kevin says. It's meant to air out.
Okay.
A question?
Ms. Cooper, I'm, I'm happy to schedule another meeting if that's necessary for the Policy Committee.
Okay.
In between meetings.
Mr. DeSilva had a question, let me add.
I, I think Kevin just solved that, solved my question. If Rich has questions that should go to the committee, maybe just the solution is the, if the committee's gonna be meeting not before our next meeting, but before the meeting after that, maybe we just don't put it on for our next meeting. We put it on.
Second meeting, right, right.
It's just an idea, especially if there's no rush.
Right.
Yeah, there's no rush.
No. Yes, right.
I was going to suggest that for the next policy anyway, that it be placed on hold and the media, let's have time for the Policy Committee to meet and discuss the next policy that we're voting on.
Okay.
But we can do that, both of them together.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So the motion, Mr. Giannelli, does it answer your questions?
Yes, it does, but so if I vote yes tonight, that's.
You're voting to have it read publicly, that's all.
That's all, okay, all right, thanks a lot, yep. Thank you.
Kate, you gonna do the roll call?
I'll do a roll call vote, sure. Joe Britton? I'll do a roll call vote, sure. Joe Britton?
Aye.
Rachel Chaleski?
Aye.
Kate Canetta? Yes. Gladys Cooper?
Aye.
Lauren Daley?
Aye.
Joe De Silva?
Aye.
Catherine Hodgson?
Aye.
Rich Janelli?
Aye.
Kathy Molinaro? You're on mute, Kathy, sorry.
I see that, aye. I see that now.
Thank you. Al Russo?
Aye.
Amy Spolino?
Yes.
Motion so care, okay. Kate, you want to do action item C?
Sure. I'll make a motion at the Board of Education except for first reading, policy two one three one point one. Appointment of designee for superintendent as accepted by the policy committee. Exhibit twenty dash fifty two.
Motion made by Kate?
I'll second that.
And Joe, second by Joe Britton? Any question and discussion? CNN?
We'll do a roll call vote again. Joe Britton?
Aye.
Rachel Chaleski?
Aye.
Kate Canetta, yes. Gladys Cooper?
Yes.
Lauren Daley?
Yes.
Joe De Silva?
Yes, aye.
Catherine Hodgson?
Aye.
Rich Janelli?
Aye.
Kathy Molinaro?
Aye.
Al Russo?
Yes.
Amy Spolino?
Aye.
Motion so care. Rachel, would you do action item D, please?
Sure. I move that the Board of Education except for first readings, Board of Education by law nine three two one, time, place, and notice of meetings as accepted by the policy committee, exhibit twenty dash fifty three.
Motion made by Rachel, second by Joe De Silva? Are any questions concerning this motion? CNN, I guess.
Rachel, so this is the one that I'd like the policy committee to discuss further. I was wondering if Ken had a chance to review it, and did she have any advice to offer us regarding electronic meeting?
Yeah, I did. Kevin, do you want to, Kevin and I, he sent it to me to review, and I I did give him some thoughts. Kevin, do you want to share those? Do you want me to do it?
Go ahead, Kim.
Okay. So this is the one about going electronic in in the crisis. My overarching thinking about it is, I do share the opinion of CAE, CAE, that I think that it should be with some reluctance that you go to a completely virtual meeting setting for people who cannot come to the meeting. And the reason why I say that is, I think partly just because typically, in my experience, boards are eager to have active participants, so people who come to the meetings who are elected Board of Ed officials, and that if there is a way to do what we're doing now outside of the crisis, that the concern always historically had been that people would just call in for the meeting. So that's the first thing. CAE, I think, in an effort to recognize that, put in an alternate policy, which talked about if there was some reason why you could go to the board chair and and ask for a specific exception. That, you know, is the kind of thing you would use if somebody was in ill health and they couldn't come to the meeting, so I I guess my feedback for you is, the first one gives me some discomfort, the alternative isn't awful, and that it may be useful to you, but you know, if you did find yourself in that situation, you also could leave the attendance policy the way it is, and vote in an exception for an emergency circumstance. You could do that. So it's really kind of a conversation for you folks about, you know, how do you feel about it or not? You want people physically coming to the meetings, or whether you want this alternative? This, what we're doing right now, is a slightly different situation because there's a governor's order that changes, basically changes FOIA, changes the rules of engagement here, so it's really not so troubling to me to use this as an emergency policy because of the COVID crisis. But, you know, it's a good, it it's a topic that you all revisit from time to time, and it really is for you all to figure out what your comfort level is on on the policy itself. The the content on them is fine, it's really just a a choice for you all to make.
Any other questions?
Actually, I had a question about, I think probably for Kim. In terms of the second half of that policy, the, you know, permissive, whatever. I saw a line in there about not using electronic, not doing executive session in electronic. I had a little bit of a concern about that language, because we've already done that. Just a little, obviously, it's different because this is an emergency, and this is all of us, and it's under COVID. I'm just worried about having a policy that states we're not supposed to do something we've already done.
Yeah, no, I I think that's a fair point, Joe. I guess I'm a little less concerned about it because we're operating under the executive order suspending the FOIA requirement, so, but it's a fair point, completely, yep.
Any more question? Rachel?
I've got a question.
Mr. Janelli?
Yeah. Are we saying that we're only allowed to do the electronics because of the current situation of the pandemic? And once it's resolved, then we are no longer eligible to to do electronic meetings? Now, could we change that based on a board policy?
Right, so I think that probably, all that the CAE policy currently addresses is the attendance of elected board members at the meeting. It presumes that the meeting's going on in situ, in a location, and that people may need to call in. The current CAE policy doesn't contemplate a virtual meeting, and I think my answer to it, honestly, Dick, would be, I'm not sure that you can create a policy that is less restrictive than the FOIA rule. You know, the FOIA rule is you hold a meeting and and you do your business at the meeting. So I'm not sure you really could change it by board policy, but I would anticipate that in light of the fact that it will have been many months that all of we boards are functioning this way, that you may see some changes to what you can and cannot do, because what a lot of boards are saying is, look, you know, you had, at one point, you had something like fifty five people on this meeting, so you're getting more people attending, so I I think there's going to be a hybrid solution, but the answer to your original question is, I'm not really comfortable that you could legislate yourself to something that's different from what FOIA is already telling you.
You know, because it does have merit from a practical point of view, you know, you mentioned earlier, for, under, let's say, extenuating circumstances, one being in the case when I personally was in a hospital and had to miss a meeting, so that would be a situation. We've had instances when we had board members who because of their jobs traveled a lot and couldn't attend many meetings. And if they were, we allowed the virtual meetings that would allow them to have the attendance, and they wouldn't have the stigma of not attending the meetings, or not fulfilling the roles of board thing. The other thing is is going forward in terms of what we've learned and using right now, you know, we can have meetings during snowstorms, so you know, I'm really not, I'm sort of confused in terms of you know, what we're going to be allowed to do and and not allowed to do.
Yeah, I I think I think of it this way, Dick, is for right now, what this policy is contemplating is a change to your way of doing business when the meeting is ongoing in the boardroom. So FOIA requires you to hold a meeting, to state the place, to do all of those things, and these alternate policies are talking about, if, as you said, if you, Richard Janelli, can't make a meeting, you can't just decide to call in without the board having a policy to accommodate that, so that's why you're entertaining the idea. My only point is, I don't think that Connecticut's sunshine laws have caught up now to this technology, but I do think that with all of us using it so intensely, that we could expect to see some tweaking, that this kind of a a meeting could be allowable if that's what you wanted to do.
It just seems strange not to take advantage of the current situation, and the progress we're doing is to just use it more effectively and efficiently.
So, so, Miss, Mr. Janelli, for, and I, for clarification, the current first reading of this policy gives, the board authorizes the board chair to allow other members to participate electronically. So this this provides for that opportunity, but I think I'm also hearing that the the policy committee would like to discuss further, and I can certainly understand that, given the conversations around this policy with the last board. But but this right now, currently in its first reading, with the board is authorizing the board chair to allow individual board members to participate electronically. So so with, given the scenarios you just shared, if the board approves it, there would be a space where that could be allowed.
Yep, thank you, appreciate it.
Are there any other questions concerning this? CNN, roll call, Kate?
All right. Joe Britton?
Aye.
Rachel Chaleski?
Yes.
Kate Canetta, yes. Gladys Cooper?
Yes.
Lauren Daley?
Yeah.
Joe De Silva?
Aye.
Catherine Hodgson?
Aye.
Richard Janelli?
Aye.
Kathy Molinaro?
Aye.
I don't know if anybody has any questions. I'll move to my next one.
Dr. Sal, can I just ask Kelly a question?
Yes.
She said it's three hundred and thirty students for summer school. What ages, Kelly, are the students?
They range from preschool, so age three all the way up until age twenty one.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll go to chronic distributes, chronic, Chromebook distribution. Yes, Gina?
Yes, I'm here, Dr. Sal, thank you. Good evening, everyone. So the Chromebook distribution is continuing. We moved to a model of putting it at the food sites, so that it's being done Monday, Wednesday, Friday, at each food site. Parents can sign up as they have since the beginning of distance learning. By Friday, we shall have distributed close to six thousand devices since the beginning of this pandemic, and we're doing about seventy devices a day. We'll keep doing that until everyone has a device, or everyone or we stop receiving requests. In addition, we're gearing up to receive our Windows ten machines from the state for our nine twelve students, so we're, the tech team is a training, attending state training this week to set those up and get ready to roll those out for the fall.
Gina, because the board may be wondering, as we, this is a new process for us, which is a gift to have this, just a little bit, our thinking about the Chromebooks and the return policy that we're thinking, just so that they have an idea of what you're thinking.
So our initial thought is that we'll let most of the kids keep their Chromebooks over the summer, especially if they need to use them for summer school. The children that are moving away or graduating, we're going to come up with that they'll, we'll have a drop off date where they can just drive up and we'll we'll do the the distribution in reverse, basically. They'll drive up and we'll take the device from them instead of handing it to them in the car. And we're in the process of coming up with the dates for for that now.
Okay. Okay, I've got, next on the list here, before, Aaron did talk about it, and I think you've all gotten that this, that that publication, I think our TV stations also talked about it, but it just, just comment that our teachers and staff and administrators, their passion for the work that they do, it's not just their job, but it's their their life's work. And you could see it come out just in that example of reaching out to these families and just making sure that their kids are taken care of, so I just say thank you and God bless to all of them. The next thing I did, some prayers on the budget.
Does Lauren have a question? I said Lauren.
Oh, Lauren, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry, that was an accident.
Oh, yeah, thank you for your group for the distribution.
Yes.
Yeah, I really appreciate that, that's been helpful. Thank you.
And and Dr. Sal, you're moving very fast. Could I also ask a question to Gina?
Go, go ahead.
My question is, what happened, everyone is not going to be fruitful in returning their Chromebooks, so I guess my question, is it a dumb question? How do you get that Chromebook if they're not going to deliver it back?
So we have, we obviously can see where they are. You know, when they log on, we we can pull where they are, and and we can remotely control their device.
Okay.
So we, so if we fail to get it back, we will basically shut down the device and lock it down, so it won't be of any use to them. They won't be able to take it anywhere to be unlocked or anything like that. It it will essentially become a paperweight for them.
Okay, thank you, I didn't know that, okay.
Yep.
I asked the same questions, that don't feel bad.
Oh, that's a great question.
Yeah, I was wondering the same thing, okay, so let's, I did mention lock it clear, we're, okay, Courtney, you're there. The one that we, you know, we've been asking the mayor about, you know, where the budget's at, and you all know what the process is, I have to tell you. It's 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 a whole different way of going about the approval this year. We do have a number, I I did ask if I could share it tonight, and we have permission to do that. And I will say to you that, as Courtney put you through this, the word you're going to have me use a lot is braided. We have money from CARE, we have money from Alliance, titled, we're going to try to braid things together. And we have a lot of braiding to do. So Courtney, why don't you kind of let the board know status about what's going on? And then we'll see if there's any questions.
Sure, so, thanks, Dr. Sal. So you know that we're in challenging economic times, and so the city has agreed to, is going to announce adding one point two five million to the budget. That's the base budget that we had when we started the year last year. So it doesn't include the one point two seven three one time that they added, so that's what they're agreeing for a city add. And that are asked, if you recall, if we include the Alliance funding, was about fourteen million. And and so between the Alliance money and the city money, it's it's not getting us the, you know, full ask, so we're going to have to look at some modifications. The city funds is one point two five million. We're expecting to get about two point two four million from CARE's funding. That's the federal emergency money. It's one time money that will be spent by September of next year, and it's for technology enhancements that we've done, and will continue to do to meet the needs of students next year as we roll out the model that will be rolled out safely for students to return to school next year. Accessing curriculum, addressing reopening, social emotional support, that CARE funding is one time money, as Dr. Sal said, we're going to have to work to to braid the funding together to meet needs, but it's a one time basis. We also have two point seven million, as you know, in new Alliance funds that we had talked with you about programming when we were working through the budget initially. And we we're going to also have an additional carryover fund, so the state on a one time basis is allowing us to carry over unspent grant money from this year as a result of COVID closure. So we do have additional grant funds that are going to roll over, that'll be part of that braided strategy that Dr. Sal spoke about. So it'll be a challenge, we want to work with you through the challenge. Our carry forward, Rich asks about that, as as you recall, our carry forward number was about and then we also need the one point two, so just to roll our budget forward, it's about six million dollars. So that's the ongoing need, because it includes staffing and contractual increases. So that's something that we'll have to address, you know, as we as we develop next year's budget. So our carry forward is about four point four percent, but the actual city add is about nine point three percent. So it's it's short, but like Dr. Sal mentioned, we have, again, carryover funds from the title grants from Alliance, as well as the new CARE's funding that we're going to get. What we expect is about two point two million. It's a little confusing, but the point is, we've got to tighten our belts a bit next year. But we do have some additional supplemental funding that will get us ready to return safely to school, address some of the distance learning curriculum needs that we continue to have.
Courtney, I I think, you know, it for an understanding for the board, we also have talked to the mayor, and that money will pass through categorically to us. That is not something that's going to be taken. Would you speak to, we have fund balances, and we've spoken with him to create an account for carryover that will apply to the next year's operation budget. Those, all of the, the board members know this, and these one time infusions are somewhat difficult because next year you have to make up for that and the other. But our budget has been year to year, year, so, you know, it's my intent to present you all a budget that's going to at least bring us forward, and also start working on the achievement gap, but it's going to require But it's going to require rating and money that we saved this year and, and allowing us to put it into, there's three buckets, I understand. It's going to be the insurance bucket that we always had as a fund balance, one on technology and one in special ed that we could distribute and carry money. Three areas that are, could be pretty explosive in our budget, particularly the medical, I worry deeply about. We're saving half as much per month. And when we open up again, people will be going to the, their doctors understandably, so that may just balloon on us. And special ed is, is, is a, always a question for us and technology we need up. So we've discussed opening those accounts up and placing money into it. I, I will caution the board, for you to use that money, you being us, with your permission, we do have to ask the city council. It's not just ours, but the mayor supports us with a fund balance, knowing that we had asked for as much as we did and that we're, and this is going to really kind of tie our hands that we're going to need these fund balances and savings. And, and we're working on what that is, I, you know, and, and it's, we didn't really put an exact number because it does change. But as we get another week or two, we'll have a better idea, right, Courtney?
Yeah, and that, that fund balance, you know, the, the biggest outlier, as you all know, having talked to Joe and spent time with this, the insurance fund. And while we were in COVID, you know, during this close down, like Dr. Sal mentioned, we've seen some really significant savings because people haven't been able to go to the doctor. And like Dr. Sal said, there'll be a backlog. And we may see people, you know, with significant illnesses. We hope we don't, but we've got to set aside. So the city's agreed to work with us to use our fund balance this year, which is mostly related to that, those insurance savings, which we have another month and a half left to see come in. And if it's coming in as we see it, we'll have a decent amount in the fund balance. That can be set up in the reserve. We're allowed to put up to 25% as you know. So we're currently at about 17%, so we can fund the difference so that next year we'll have a little bit of extra so that we can balance out those peaks and, and valleys in the insurance experience because we're self-insured. And then in addition, as Dr. Sal mentioned, the technology, we can set up a reserve with the city that we'd have to get their permission to use as well as special ed, you know, as we, if we see an increase in out placements, that would help us. So that's something new that would be great that we can do. No. So, and then the, the final piece that we, we didn't mention earlier is the 550,000 from the Matrix funding, Dr. Sal. So the city has agreed that we can talk about that, that it looks likely that we will get that next year. And that Matrix funding can be used to offset our Granville lease that we have signed, as Kelly mentioned in an earlier board meeting, for our 3K. You know, where we're going to put a majority of our 3K classrooms, not all of them. So, yeah, and the fund balance, one additional last thing I would mention about our fund balance is that the city has also agreed, if we pursue a strategy to give us a one-time appropriation, so not just to put it in reserve, which would be available just on an ongoing, like one time, but in a reserve, but to our appropriation, but it requires the approval of the Board of Finance. So for us to use our, our, our fund balance from this year, if we were to get a one-time appropriation for next year. So that's on the, on the, as a possibility for one strategy as well.
Just, I know there's questions for, we started looking at anticipating this, and I, we'll go without saying, if we have a reenactment of last August, we're in trouble. One, we're in trouble. And this core, this money for the COVID virus, we are, I guess, participating in some grants who are hoping to help us. But, you know, if we have to add buses, if we have to add teachers and cleaning individuals, like I said to the mayor, I don't know what we're going to do. So that, you know, we can't just shoulder all of that on the amount here. So there was a recognition for that. If you're saying, what is it you're going to do? We're just going to not fill any positions that we do not need filled. I will tell the board that typically we have 25 retirees and we do take credit for that in the budget. We currently have eight, so that impacts us as well. And the lens that we're going to look at is closing the gap using our funds from the state and the Alliance to assist with those techniques and then place the programs in special ed and support that we need and try to be reasonable in our class sizes. And then, you know, just keep working on it and put something in front of you to see how, what you think. So Kim, I don't know if you have anything to add, or Kelly, or Kevin, before I end this part of it? Anybody?
I have anything? Nope. I do not.
Okay, okay.
Does anyone have a question concerning the budget?
I've got a question, Dr. Sal or Courtney. It's, it's very confusing in all your terminology. I look at it, last year, we had two budgets. We had an operational budget where you asked for $11 million. And then you had another, for the first time, we put it together, an Alliance budget, and we increased that by 2.7 million dollars. So somewhere along the line, you're looking for 13 or 14 million dollars collectively. If you separate the thing, on the operational budget that we put together for the 11 million dollars, you're telling me that we got 1.2 million dollars as an appropriation against the operational budget, number one?
Yes.
You used the word of carryovers. I don't know what the carryover refers to. Does this mean that whatever unspent dollars in a operational budget that we normally would spend by the end of the year or the excess money we had, we would put toward this insurance reserve? And I think that insurance reserve of $6 million should be pretty close. Is that going to be given to us as, as a reserve? And then you, you also have a grant budget where the Alliance money is at. So you're co-mingling, to me, it's very confusing when you're co-mingling all this stuff. I like to see it in terms of the way we presented the budget so that we know what we're doing. In a nutshell, if we're getting collectively six or seven million dollars with all of the stuff that you're talking about versus an ask of a 14 million dollars, the picture doesn't seem to be apparently that rosy.
Well, it's not rosy, Rich. I mean, we just got that number last Friday and Monday to share. I mean, what we're going to do is do exactly what you're saying. We have to look at all of those, those, those accounts and by sector, how much of the Alliance. But you have to all remember, what you take out of Alliance can be serendipitous used anywhere. It's got to go. Close the achievement gap.
Saying there are two separate distinct budgets. I'm not talking about Alliance. I'm just talking about the funding for the 11 million dollar budget that we have so far. Of the 11 million dollars, you're telling me we got 1.2 million dollars from the city and maybe another 2.2 from CARES that we can utilize against that. So we've got a huge shortfall. You're looking at 4.9 million dollars, which we said were maintenance, just to turn on the lights.
No, I know, I realize that. And that's why I said, you know, this is no easy task. We're looking at fund balances. Well, no, we're looking at fund balances to help cobble money towards that and mitigate that amount. And that's where we're going to need the mayor to permit us to do that.
When you say fund balances, I don't mean to interrupt.
Let's make an assumption. Let's say when we end July 1st, we have, based on the savings, not using substitutes, based on money from medical, and we have 2.5 million dollars. I'm going to ask for that to be used for us. But I, you're not permitted, or we're not permitted, to have a savings account other than in those areas. So only legitimate way to do it is to pass it through to those accounts and then say, okay, we're going to need money for special ed. We're going to need money for, what do you call, for benefits and, right? And, and use that money to help cobble up what you said before and shore up where the, the 11 million we didn't get. Because we didn't get it. We got actually the point, 0.93%, not adding the 200, I'm sorry, not adding the 550,000 from your, from the developer. We've got a lot of work ahead of us. Yes. And it'll be divided that way.
Just to be, just to be clear though, Rich, really briefly, that just simply the fund balance is the city side, the operating budget. So the fund balance is the one that Dr. Sal talked about, our, our balance from this year. And the carryover is related to grants. It's a one-time thing that the state's allowing with our titles and our Alliance funding for this year for underspending. It's a carryover amount. So we have that, that carryover from the grant and the fund balance from, from the city side.
So at the last, at the last board meeting, then to use your terminology, fund balance, we were talking about somewhere about, I remember it says around about 450,000. So how did it go from 450 to 2.5 million? Is that the, the, the benefit that you're, you're estimating that wasn't used relative to the health insurance account?
Yeah, we're seeing every month, we're seeing a little more than a million dollars better than what our budget was in the health insurance during the COVID closure. It's huge. We didn't predict it. And so, yes, to answer your question, that's, that's most of it.
But that can come back to bite you next year when, at some point, people then want to go and get, do their normal checkups and things like that. So.
Right.
Just may get a double win.
Put it in a reserve and then also, you know, we're going to budget appropriately for it next year as well.
Okay.
But we're trying, we're trying to, as the board's always asked me to, not, not to reduce teachers and keep teachers in front of kids. And now we're to the point where we have to support a lot of the bilingual students and those students that are in need of special needs. So it's, 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 it's quite a stretch, Rich, no doubt. And we'll work more with the mayor in terms of these fund balances, whatever they turn out to be. You know, you do have the COVID money. You have some leasing money and other things that we need. What you don't have is this money we were asking for is taking us to another level. Right now, you know, we're just trying to keep us moving forward and not lose ground. I mean, that's what we're basically doing.
Yeah, I mean, just picture in my mind, when the budget was presented, we, as I said, in addition to the 4.9 for maintenance, you had about 800,000 for the, for Augusto's group, and you had a couple of million dollars, if I'm not mistaken, for the climate, the terminology of climate. But when is your position to generate some, some information so that we could, you know, at least meet and discuss, you know, discuss what you're looking to, to do? I'm not looking to rush you, but it's just for myself, in terms of a timetable, is to, now that you got this information,
I would hope, I would hope sometime next week, you want to have a finance group, that's fine. Like after next Wednesday, Thursday, I'll ask Courtney. We started doing some numbers and, you know, we're just working through it. Next week would be, you know, we're about four weeks behind because we haven't had a number.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we'll try next week to have a finance committee meeting. So at the next board meeting, we'd have some real, you know, some real tangible things to look at because we're not certain. Other than, yeah, we're not going to, as you said, climate, well, we can't do that. And, but the Augusto stuff, parts of it we have to do. And special ed, parts of it we have to do. There's some we'd like to do that are not going to get done, things like that. But we need to, I think next week, Courtney, unless you have a different timeframe, I'm looking more towards maybe Thursday, but that's up to you.
Yeah, no, that sounds great. We made some, we can certainly have things prepared by then, definitely.
Whatever, you know, at your convenience. I know you've got a thousand things to do, so.
This is the most important now.
Just give us a timetable and then we'll see if we could go through and understand this and evaluate what has to be done.
Understood, Rich, yeah.
All right. Thank you very much.
I, I have a couple of questions, if I may. Courtney, make sure I understand the conversation you and Rich just had, and some of this may be, I'm not as deep into the detail as Rich. We asked previously for effectively about a 9.95 million dollar increase, correct?
Correct.
We're getting 1.2.
Correct.
No. Oh, I'm sorry. Did you say percentage or millions?
Dollars.
Millions.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. You're right. Yes. I'm sorry.
Okay. I'm not, I went to law school because math wasn't my major in college, but even I can tell that's only slightly more than 10% of what we asked for. Correct me if I'm wrong, this, what we're getting doesn't even hold us harmless for carrying on what we were doing this year, correct?
Correct. If we didn't have the, what, if we didn't have the fund balance and the, and the carryovers and the grants, which are, we're going to use to braid to do things that we need to do for next year, that's correct.
And the COVID money.
So functionally speaking, what this is, is this is a budget cut by the city of Danbury.
I mean, we've been talking with the city and, and, you know, in awareness that they're going to work with us to have funds, you know, from our fund balance and, you know, in awareness of the carryover from the grant funds. They're hopeful to work with us to make sure that we have what we need for next year.
But I'm just saying.
But yes, you're right. Yes.
I'm just trying to make sure I have it right. The fund balance savings is money we stumbled on because of what happened this year in terms of what we saved. And the CARES Act money is money that was legislated by Congress.
Correct.
So in terms of what the city of Danbury doing is, they are effectively giving us less money than it would take to operate our schools at a bare minimum and carry out this year's activities by a significant number.
Yes, if you're considering just the city operational funds and the city budget, that would be, yeah, that's correct.
One other question.
Yeah, just think of, pardon me, Joe, just think, last year comes September, this year, September, we asked for, Dr. Sal asked for a special appropriation of 1.2 million dollars because of the increase that we had in enrollment. The 1.2 million allocation we just received basically covers only that. So you look at it, there's no increase.
I, I have a question. You mentioned, Courtney, the Matrix money? And we should be able to use that next year? Query, that was part of our budget for this year.
Yeah.
How are we making up the fact that that wasn't, that was, correct me if I'm wrong, that was part of the money we were supposed to, that was contemplated in what we were spending for academic year in 1920, not 2021, correct?
Correct, yes.
So that didn't come in this year?
It did come in. So it came into us as an appropriation. The city may or may not have received that revenue, but we were able to spend the funds that were associated with that.
We got the money for the, okay, excellent.
And Joe, we should get it again next year.
Yeah.
Okay.
We, because we.
I'm good. I'm good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. It's a good question.
Are there any other question for Courtney or Dr. Sal?
So Gladys, I guess what we're going to try to do is get a finance committee meeting next week, work on some of these things. And then I hope at the next board meeting, we will have something much more substantive for everybody to look at.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Yeah, we have, let me just turn my page here.
Plan update?
Yeah, we have the reentry plan. You heard Aaron in the beginning, we do have a plan. Do we have a plan? I'm sorry. We have a committee, a reentry committee now. It's, it's a core committee and that committee will expand out to reaching out to other folks. It's just, you can't have a committee of 900 people, but we have a core committee. And Kevin, maybe you want to talk to the board a little bit about what you're thinking, what we're doing with it?
Sure, sure. And I will, I will start with the points that we heard earlier from Aaron because she, I mean, she was absolutely right. There is going, certainly going to be a need to drill, drill down further in the organization to make sure we have the feedback from the representative departments. And so as, as, as everyone on this board might imagine, I'm hearing from a lot of folks saying, hey, you know, when, when can I have an opportunity to represent my department? Or, you know, we have some ideas as classroom teachers, et cetera, and I understand and appreciate all of them. This, this initial phase that we're, this initial phase, this is our second meeting. We have a meeting tomorrow afternoon, Security and Safety Committee. And so we have the chief of police, the fire chief, the person in part charge of the Department of Health. We have our district physician, and then of course our, our district nurse in Kathy O'Dowd. And, and then a number of district representatives, including as Aaron had mentioned earlier, someone from the, you know, those two major bargaining units, the admin union representative and the teacher representative unit. And so this, this initial group, this first level group, if you will, is really to get the feedback from the experts in the field to, to, to give us some guidance on what we can and cannot do right now, right? And so firsthand guidance from our district physician and, and, and Department of Health around, you know, clarification around the guidance for bringing kids into school. What is best practice if we're going to be bringing kids and family, kids to schools and teachers to schools on a modified basis? And so we need, we need to make sure we understand. And so we need, we need to make sure we understand, um, you know, given, given this uncharted territory, making sure it's clear what the questions are and, and the things that we need to answer as a district. We are envisioning this moving forward to drill down further into the organization. Right now, you know, we don't have elementary representation up in, you know, to, to, to inform what an elementary schedule could look like. Uh, we don't have high school representation to represent what a high school schedule could look like. Um, and so we recognize that those folks are going to need to be at the table. Um, in addition, you know, we need folks from our PE department, our music department. Um, you know, there's, if, if we're going to be in school on a modified basis, uh, certainly we're going to need protocols to address instruments that none of us necessarily have the expertise to talk, to speak to. So we'll make sure that those folks are at the table. Um, and, and that's just an example. Just going back to our last meeting, which was April 30th. Um, I think this is the first time I was in the meeting and we wrote notes for a meeting that had question marks all over it, like all of the notes were essentially question marks. Um, and I think that speaks to the uncharted waters that we're going into, but, you know, there were questions, all of the questions that I think our community is asking, um, they were asked at this, they were asked in this meeting on April 30th. And what, what we have done, um, for in preparation for tomorrow's meeting is put together a draft plan in response to all of that feedback. Um, there, there, there was guidance coming back nationally. The, the White House has a blueprint for reopening schools. Uh, we've seen some, some other plans that, that have been released from other states. And then a handful of districts around the country have also released plans. And so all of those plans are, have certainly informed ours. Um, our plan is going, there are a number of links. Um, Stell and I had talked a couple of days ago. Um, and love the fact that there's some research in there that's going to help inform some of our academic decisions. Um, and then the rest of the plan really talks about safety. Um, and you know, we, we're, we're going to take every precaution necessary to make sure our staff and our kids are safe. Um, we have a, there, there are a number of options out there from, um, a staggered schedule to AB schedule. You know, to some type of hybrid and we will certainly be exploring all of those things. But no matter what we do, we will not have kids and staff back in the school, uh, without all of the appropriate safety precautions and protocols in place, which is why we have the experts in the room helping us land on, um, land on, you know, land on the, the appropriate mitigation strategies. Um, so we envision tomorrow, uh, we're going to have, um, breakout, we'll have like 20 people, 20 plus people on a call tomorrow. Um, we will have breakout sessions, breakout groups virtually for those, for the 20 people on the group and get feedback on our plan. I'm anticipating that this draft plan that folks will be looking at, that there'll be considerable adjustments to, to the plan, which I'm, I'm hoping for and anticipating. And as we get further guidance from the state and further guidance over these next few months, um, I feel comfortable and confident we'll have something that the community feels, feels safe. They would, they would feel good about sending their kids back to school.
Just so the board, because it was brought up, we started about three weeks ago, four weeks ago, ordering supplies for next year. So just, just want you to know we've done that, but no way that we ordered, I think enough of what we think we're going to need if we have to provide, you know, everybody's PPEs, whatever. But I don't know if they have any questions of Kevin. Do you know which board members are rep? I, I, I'm sorry.
Mr. Russo.
Mr. Russo. Okay. I have nothing else. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, we move down to, uh, information. Do you have any additional information, Dr. Sal?
No.
Okay. Okay. So the board chairperson report. Um, my report is, is, uh, very briefly, uh, the evaluation committee met on, um, Monday and, um, to discuss the annual evaluation process. And given the challenges presented by the current pandemic, uh, the closure and the tremendous time and attention, um, involved in the move to distant learning. We determined that this year it would be most appropriate for us as a committee to use the cap, the caves caps, um, recommendation superintendent evaluation form, as was suggested that last year. It was suggested last year and to, um, to narrow the focus to four areas that are set forth in the superintendent goals. Those four areas are number one, family, school and community partnership, planning for growth, number three, accountability and organizational learning. And number four, college and career readiness for all students. We, the committee sort of decided that we are going to, um, recommend a narrative for.
Do we just lose her?
Looks like she froze up there.
Yeah.
Gladys, Gladys, sorry to interrupt. Your, uh, your signal cut out, uh, about, um, partway through that, that last sentence. If you could just repeat it, please.
Actually Gladys, uh, your signal cut out right after you said college and career readiness, the last bullet, if you can.
Okay. The last bullet was college and career readiness for all students. Okay. So I, we have the other, all four, right?
And then there was one more sentence after that, Gladys.
The, the board will be recommending a narrative this year. Okay. We're going to use part of the form and we're going to be making it into a narrative in those four areas that I just mentioned. And for all board members, um, we all have the superintendent evaluation form. And if you don't have a copy, let me know and I'll make sure Carol gets it to you tomorrow. So you can have a time to look at it and digest. Okay. Secondly, um, I just want to, uh, thank the committee members, you know, uh, for coming out. Uh, and those chairs, Jill Britton had a committee meeting, Rachel had a committee meeting. And thank everyone for putting, um, forth and having, um, board members, uh, the committee express their concern. The next, the last thing I also want to say, I want to appreciate everyone, uh, because I believe we should work together. And, uh, I know some people don't like to be called on at last minute. And I thank Rachel and I had talked to, uh, Kate earlier and I asking you to please read your information. And if I call you, ask you to make a motion, it's just have everybody participate. So, uh, that's my only thing. Okay. And it's not going to be the same people all the time. This is a new year. We want to do something different. And I want people to participate. Okay. Thank you. If I don't have anything else. Um, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion, who made the motion?
I said so moved.
Okay. Okay. All in favor? Thank you all so very much.
Have a good night, everybody.
Have a good night.
Night, thank you.
Thank you.